All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. And move on to our first agenda item, our 2023 legislative position review.
Yeah.
Stephen?
Yep, so we've got a couple of things that we'll go over this afternoon. And just as a refresher for everybody, this is heading into the legislative season now where we start to get our district legislative platform finalized for the things that we want to present as priorities as we meet with legislators and have our legislative breakfast in December. And then, as part of that, as we kind of look at the lay of the land with our related organizations, we take a look at some of the resolutions that we know will be moving forward for other groups that we're affiliated with so that we can line up as much as possible. Or, in the case today of our ASBSD review, if there are things that we want to recommend when delegates meet and go over this document, we can weigh in on those things as well. So Todd, would you just remind us kind of of what our options are as we review the document in terms of how we can make a recommendation to ASBSD?
Yeah, the, if you look at item number four on the agenda, which says if necessary, that language is right out of their guidance, which is, if you want to, the board would need, would need to vote ahead of the meeting. That's why we have it on this, because we don't have a meeting in the meantime before, or before it's due. I mean, to create, amend, or eliminate a proposed ASBSD resolution. Now, you've been out there before, some of you, Cynthia for sure. I don't know if there's a lot of give and take and just general commentary and trying to, but there are some items here we don't really think should pass. So maybe we, at the end of the day, before we get out of here, we will have you, so we have an actual motion that we can send to them and tell them why.
So we're going to start with the draft of our legislative platform, and we have this scheduled right now for actual board action in December. And we could do it at our November 14 meeting as well. We just have it slated for action. So there's no action on our platform today. This is for discussion purposes. So we have a couple of things that's front and back, and some of this is very repetitive from last year, but moved along a little bit. So we're going to start with the juvenile justice position. Last year, this was also a standing position. And one of the things that happened during the session was it got the attention of our legislators, because this isn't just a Sioux Falls issue, this is also a statewide focus, so much so that the legislature went into a summer study. And that summer study was a group that then kind of subdivided into three areas. And then, I'm assuming they'll probably bring some things forward during the session, but they looked at everything from truancy to possible program changes that might help students stay in school, to the criminal juvenile justice angle, students who have some significant juvenile delinquency type events in their lives, and what programming. Diversion has been a main area of focus, and what does successful diversion look like? How is that funded? What's the funding mechanism that drives dollars to the different areas of our state? And then, how does that kind of work over time for successfully helping kids get back on track? So all of those things were discussed. And so what we wanted to do is keep that momentum going and make sure that we give that attention depending on what comes up. So that first paragraph is really the same pretty much as last year. And then, we just revised the section that talks about the summer study that was conducted and advocating for the things that I just mentioned, including the needs that may come forward from some of our other partners in terms of the existing facilities. I know there's some work that our county partners are hoping to have done on the actual facilities that house students who are being detained, as well as just focusing on this as a statewide initiative. So, any comments, questions, or discussion on that first area, and then we'll move to the next one?
No, I, I think this is obviously a very important area. It was, I was glad to see some traction on it last year, because it has been over five years since the changes came about, so it's a good time to take that study in heart. And I do believe that the funding just mechanism itself needs to be reevaluated, how it's funded, because right now, it's, you basically self-analyze yourself, you tell you, you'd make your own parameters of what's successful and what's not successful. There's no state standard. And then, you tell them you're successful or not. And then, the people who have said they've been successful in the past get the money right away, and they're, and even though they might not be as successful, somebody has different standards. And it makes it hard for this process to be changed at this point.
Just for clarity for everybody, there's an incentivized mechanism right now in the funding distribution. So, successful diversion as defined maybe differently by different areas then draws dollars for that. And what we would probably advocate more for is just the dollar should follow the number of students who need to be going through diversion, which requires staff, it requires the capacity to do diversion successfully, and people then who can track that process with juveniles through, through the process. Questions or other comments? And if there's wordsmithing to be done, we can take care of that between now and when that actually comes for board action, so don't get too lost in the semantics of the document. Okay, and then the next area, again, is one that's a little bit repetitive from last year. And we relate this to many different things, but right now, we've put it under our district priorities of effective use of resources and staff excellence, because we know a large part of our dollars go towards personnel. And we know that retaining and attracting a workforce is going to continue to be somewhat challenging. And we also know that South Dakota does not rank highly in terms of teacher compensation. And our district has made some good strides there, but just as we're raising compensation in South Dakota, many other states are as well. So I think we like inched up to 47 and then slid back down to, I believe it's 50. I'd have to look and check that for sure. But Todd, do you want to say something about the first part there? The formula itself?
Oh, yeah, you know, the formula is good. It's just inflation factor is always the item that isn't necessarily great. And it's 3% or inflation, whichever is less. Last year, oh, and they do it two years in a row. So like, we're going to be, when we go into the legislative session, we're going to be now talking about FY '24, right? So FY '22, we just finished, so we know what inflation is. It ran at 7.9% for FY '22. You know, and then we're, so we're set to get three to follow the formula, which is 3% inflation, whichever is less. We, last year, though, we, it was set to be 2.6, and we received six. So there'll be a little, I'm sure, discussion about that as well, funding that in advance. But the issue here is, we're just saying instead of, and we've said it for a few years now, so this isn't just new, because inflation got over three. It's just, we said it should be 3% or CPI, whichever is greater, which then next year would be 7.9%.
And I think it's important to remember, you know, especially since our budget and our state has to be balanced, there's only so much pots of money. And if, you know, we're, we always get funded, kind of, they look at state employees and well, as well as state aid for education, after they fund the two big ones that are already out there, like Medicaid and the prison system, I think is the other big one. And you look at, if Medicaid expansion occurs, that's going to be more money taken from the leftovers, as well as if the sales tax on food is taken away. So how is the state now going to balance the budget and provide funding for education, which comes after those other two pots of money being filled? So these are just all things we need to be thinking about as district and state as well.
Yeah. Questions, comments from others?
I think just as it's noted in here, we've been talking for several years about the ASR funds and how they're going to be sunsetting. And so you add that on top of what Cynthia just described, which is what makes this even more, maybe urgent or more important this year than, even though this isn't the first or the last time that this will come up, there are just other factors that are kind of influencing the bigger picture as we near the end of that ASR funding, so.
I think I left out an E. It's E S S E R, isn't it? Sometimes I see it with and sometimes I see it without, but I think I needed an E, so we'll fix that.
And it's, that grant runs out, I mean, the last year you can spend it is FY '24. So we got one more year after this, this four-year.
Okay, anything else with that? Continue to be a need. All right, Todd, why don't you go through the next area? This is one that we're thinking about, and I think the board needs to weigh in on this because of the implications for board terms.
So, over the last few years, and maybe it's even more than a few years, it seems like every year, there's a bill or two, or maybe even more, to try to combine certain local elections with other elections to get bigger turnout. And they don't seem to pass. I know one of the issues is all, is usually about like a bond referendum, however, this doesn't address that. This, this is our idea, I guess, to try to do two things. It'll save us some money, it'll make us more efficient, and it'll also, based on the evidence, increase turnout. So the issue with kind of school boards, which are unique versus kind of the other entities we deal with around here, you have three-year terms, and, and everybody else has two- or four-year terms. So they have even-yeard elections and we have odd-yeard elections. So if you look at this table, which wraps over the next page, but if you look at that, like when we have even-yeard elections, we have a low, I think of 11.3% turnout, and a high of 32.9. Our high years are when, is an even year when the mayor, mayor election is on, that drives the biggest turnout. So then if you look at our odd-year elections, we had a low of 3.7, we had another 3.9. We had, we had a high one of 14.9, but no offense to the school board, but most of the people, I believe, showed up to vote on whether we started before or after Labor Day in school that year. That was combined with that election. So if you get, if you go through all those and look at the averages, if you take out the count, in 2020, our election with the city was combined with the county, so we had all three elections for people to show up. So if you, if you take that one out and you take out the, the odd one where we had, which was in an odd year, which was with the Labor Day vote for school starts, you see the average is 22.3 for the city, if you exclude 2020, our, for when we combined with the city, and it's 4.2% if you don't include the Labor Day vote. So you can, by just saying, we want our terms to end in even years and no odd-year terms, you can get five times the voter turnout on average. In some years, it'll be a little bit higher when the mayor's involved, when the mayor election, that would be a little, but it'll almost always be higher than, than what we're used to in the last 10 years. So what we're saying here is, if a school board wants to, and they don't have to, but if a school board wants to, they'd be able to, at their first year of the meeting, say we want to switch to four-year terms. And then the transition for that would just be, after that period of time, in your even number of years, there'd be four-year terms, and then odd year, it would be a three, and then it would become an even year, and then it would become a four. So you'd eventually get there. We only have one person in a one-year term, but, or in an, in an odd-year election, or, but I think you're, yeah, but yeah, so, right. So some districts have nine board members, so they'd have probably three, three, and three. But, so at one point, then, we'd get to, three, three would be up, and two would be up, is how it would be going forward, if, if we went this way, if it passed and we went this way. So that's our proposal. It would also then, by doing that, it would, we, we would have one less election every two years, which costs about $40,000, $50,000, depending on, it could be closer to $50,000 now, to run an election. So it'd save us $50,000 in a couple of years.
Which is great. And that's what I was going to clarify, is that when we ran our own elections, usually we, it cost us less than what we paid the county and city to run it. But since we'll be eliminating having one every year, that's where our cost savings were.
Yeah, we'd just probably work something out, or we'd just continue to pay what we paid, plus whatever inflation is for them, because we do run our election cheaper than they do.
I'm, I think this is a great proposal, to have more turnout is good for the district, it's good for the school board, it's good for the taxpayers as well.
Yeah, I think it's just the, the money we would save, you know, so.
Yeah, so I think, do some thinking about this one, and, and if we need to do anything wordsmithing or do some other legwork with it, we sure can before we take a vote on it. But that's just something that we thought we'd throw out there for consideration, if that's something that you want to see if we can move forward. Okay? Any other comments or questions on that? Okay, then there's just a few other bullets. Some of those are repetitive, again, from last year. One of the things that's been bantered out about just a little bit is moving the dropout age from 18 to 16. So that's one thing we could include on here and cover at our legislative breakfast. Early childhood education, we've had on there before. And there's probably a little more traction around that, just with the conversations this year that have happened, kind of statewide and within our community around the need for childcare, and what we've seen happen with some of the providers that have gone by the wayside. So I think any level of attention that can be given to that is good. Dual credit program flexibility. Dr. Boyson, would you want to speak to that just a bit, and just give the example that you mentioned the other day when we talked about it?
Sure. So dual credit, as you know, students can, cannot enroll in, enroll in dual enrollment courses until they're a junior. And so as we are continuing to build pathways with the local universities and STC, LPN is one of the pathways that we are looking at to provide that opportunity for students to get a jumpstart on that. And if we could encourage the legislation to let juniors, so I can enroll the summer before my junior year, giving them one more semester, if you will, of time to take dual credit opportunities, we could get some students through that LPN pathway and graduate with their LPN and a high school diploma at the same time, or, or just even that summer afterwards. But by delaying the dual credit or keeping it as-is, it takes six to 12 months more for them to complete that LPN pathway. So just providing that opportunity for those that are ready to take it the summer before their junior year would give them an extra jumpstart on those dual enrollment opportunities.
So we think about impact on workforce, and we think about it in terms of hospitals largely, but I was just speaking with some of our partners in healthcare yesterday, and we know it's nursing homes and other places that require medical personnel. And so it's a need everywhere, I think, from school nurses on out to the wide, wide world. And then the last one that we have on here, and we can certainly add or take out, but we had this one as well, with just continuing to advocate for the state to consider using the ACT for all 11th grade students as a state test, like we see in other states, just as a door opener and an access point for high schoolers that might otherwise not take ACT. So we left that one on there. Additions, deletions, other things that we are forgetting or need to add to our list?
This is a good list to start with, for sure. And then, obviously, play defense.
More things arise, yes. Okay, well then, let's move to just review the draft of the resolutions that may be considered by ASBSD. And like ours, some of them are the same as they have been over time. And so we'll primarily focus on the ones that have had some proposed changes in language as we move through this document. And then, we'll have our thoughts together as Mr. Murran serves as our delegate, I believe, with the board later this month. So Todd, I'll turn it over to you to kind of walk us through the ones that have some substantive changes to note.
Okay, great. Most of these, there, there's some that don't have any changes, and we won't even talk about those. There's some that have changes that aren't real, real huge, or we tend to do agree with, and there's others where we wrote comments on. So on those, I tried to star them and wrote down below their stuff at like the potential SFSD position, and then we'll spend most of our time on those. So we're looking, the first item that has any change is that item A3. A for everybody is achievement equity. And then, their third resolution, they have a change there. We didn't have any comments on that, so if it's okay, you can just stop me when, if there's something that I'm just glossing over, if you want to talk about it. For school employee compensation, they're proposing deletion, because they think it's covered somewhere else, don't really have an issue with that. And they have one on state testing requirements. It's, it's about opposing legislation that would exempt any student in a public, private, or homeschool from state assessments. Don't really have an issue with that, so don't really have a comment to talk about on that one. And then, and that rolls over to the next page. And then below that is content standards, and I have those kind of three stars off to the side of that. That means a reminder that I want to stop and talk about that one. So I'm not really the expert on this one, so I'll probably turn it over to Dr. Stephen. But you can see, our proposed position to you is to submit saying, do not adopt the position.
Right. The, the short description of that is that we believe existing statute covers things the way it should be. The Secretary of Education is charged with developing a standard cycle of standards review, which is then sent to the State Board of Ed Standards for approval, which we believe is the correct way that allows school districts to have a predictable cycle. Many school districts base their cycle of review for curriculum off of that predictable cycle. And so the proposal in here to us wouldn't be a change that we would want to see from existing statute. Questions or comments about that? But that's the simple way of...
Yeah, I think the piece in there that has some teeth and is important is the Department of Education to, to conduct a review with, with collaboration from South Dakota educators and other appropriate professionals. Just that inclusiveness of that we have the people and the resources here, and that the Department of Education kind of helps facilitate that. Collaboration is, is an important component.
Right, which would be the process now.
Exactly.
And so that would be what we would want to retain. The proposal is that that would move that to be kind of the reverse process, and that's not what we would want to see.
Exactly. Yep.
Other comments, questions about that one?
So the next page is B, it's, start at B anyway, it's local governance. The first one they have, they've just changed the rationale, basically to update it, because it's talking about a bill, and they want to start talking about a law, if that makes sense. Then they have, item two is on school finances, and they're, it's just a real basic comment, no changes. Item three, no changes. Item four is just adding savings account or voucher program about diverting dollars to, from, to fund non-public education. So that seems okay. There's one, five is the private school scholarship program, no change. Six is symbols and events, no change. Seven is decision-making regarding transgender legislation. Minor change in the resolution. The rationale is quite a bit more about getting off and talking about 2016 and whatnot, but the, the change to the resolution is just changing the association, former policy to policy. So there's no great change there as well. So we didn't have a comment on that. Eight is legal and financial protection for compliance with the law, just cites another statute in there in the rationale. So no big deal there. Nine is about behavioral and mental health resources. It says, we support additional state and federal resources and funding for schools to support behavior and mental health. Kind of talked about that a little bit already in one of our items that we're going to bring forward. Ten is about safe schools, resources for that, and it just adds in funding like it did in the last one. Okay, so that's no big deal. Then they eliminated the school board training policy, and said it was incorporated into student achievement standing position there.
And I'm going to just chime in on that one. That's one that I asked Mr. Murran to just get a little more information. I wasn't real clear on that, because I think we would all agree that board continuing ed opportunities through ASBSD are important. And so I think you just want to make sure that that's not lost, and so I don't know the rationale for kind of coupling those things up. That might be something that we get more information on as the process moves forward.
So I didn't print out the standing positions, because this is the stuff that's more fluid. I can email all of you a copy, I mean, a link to the copy of those if you want to, or I can just load, download and give you a PDF of it, so you can look that over.
Okay.
But, so you don't go through that. Then, when we get to item 12, yeah. That one, I want to talk about a little bit. It's about school board and school... It's about school board and school bond elections. So there, we talked earlier, and there's things about combining school board elections with other elections, there's bills, and then there's always a bill, it seems like, about combining a bond election. It's like you would, you would do it with the November election. And then, you know, that's every two years, and that can throw off your timing if you want to pass a bond. And if you do it in November, you've had to set your levies already for the next year or your requests. So that pushes it back even another year, because you can't do it until the bond passes. So this, this issue here is basically A S B S D's attempt to leave the board, leave the bond elections alone, but say the school board elections will be either the second Tuesday in April or June, so that there is a constant date, because right now, it can be between the second Tuesday of June and I think the last or third Tuesday in, our second Tuesday of April, all the way to the last Tuesday in June. So there's, so there's a wide spread there. And they think, their approach here is that if we make it a constant one or the other, that will solve this issue, and we won't have to deal with these every year. So our comment on this, first of all, is we think our idea is better. And it's to replace this with our own election proposal or oppose a change. Sioux Falls holds its standalone election odd number of years on the Tuesday prior to the last day of school, and in even numbered years on the second Tuesday in April, because we combine with the city, and that's when their election is. So we wouldn't want to hold ours when it's alone. We don't want to hold ours on the second Tuesday in April, because we're just coming out of our budget season, and it's a lot of work to put in an election right after, I mean, you're just ending the, all the heavy work on the budget. But when we combine with the city, that's, that's okay. So we hold ours, and we don't want to go in June, because we want to do it while parents are still around, you know, people take their vacations in the summer. And so you got your, your most interested clients, I guess, are still in town for school, so we always hold it that late, in late May, right before school gets out. So I don't want to get locked in to the second, the second Tuesday in April or the second Tuesday in June. So if we don't want to have them try to, if we don't want to replace this with our proposal, which maybe the A S B S D doesn't want to do, that'd be fine. Like to change it so that it was more, it was more flexible than what they're proposing. And it seems, looking at the primaries, the way I understand it, the primary in June, the primary election in June, follows the November election rule, which is the Tuesday following the first Monday. So you, if you wanted to combine with that, you couldn't even do that some years, because some years that isn't, most years that isn't the second Tuesday.
It should even mirror that language.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, right. As something, and I don't know how many schools combine with the, combine with that election. We don't, we combine with the city. But that would even take that option away from us if, if we wanted to do that instead. So I don't know. I guess, I guess the question is, should we just oppose it? Do we want to do this replacement language, or do we want to replace it with our, with our idea? Which is kind of for you guys to decide.
At what point, are you asking for us to make the decisions now, so that Mark can carry that forward? Because at that point, I mean, I'd ask Mark to.
It's on item four on our agenda.
Oh, good. Okay.
So we'll take a vote on things that we want to, and this is one, we, we want to do one of two things, one of three things, well, two and a half things. Amend it with our proposal.
Only two.
Amend it, amend it with a simpler proposal that's more flexible, or just say we oppose, we oppose it.
I'm thinking you better write that up.
Yeah, we will. Write it up. We just want, we'll just need the board to act and say we, which one of those three we want to do, and then we'll write that up.
We'll know after Agenda Item Four, what you'll prepare for, or please carry for.
We good on that now? Okay, so we're going to come back to that one later on. Item twelve. Okay, then now on governance and dealing with the COVID pandemic, they'd made some changes in there, updating language. We're recommending to the board that we recommended them to just get rid of that in the resolution.
You really want to be done with COVID.
Yeah. It's endemic now, right?
Well, and it's not just, I mean, it's not just COVID.
Yeah.
If, if there was anything, you could change it to just, you know, health-related, public health.
Public health.
Whatever, but to me, we do that anyway. I mean, public health has done that for years with.
Something, for that matter.
So I just thought it's somewhat unnecessary. So again, maybe, I don't know, either more information or just, I didn't, I didn't understand why it was necessary to particularly adding that detail rather than taking it out, which is what we've kind of been doing.
So we'll consider that too on item four.
It's not a big deal, but.
Yeah, maybe we just, I mean, we don't have to make a big deal out of everything, whatever you guys feel. The next one is no change, school organizations. And then the item fifteen in B is state-operated website for notices or meeting information posting. I don't quite get what they're doing there with their amendments. Last year, they passed a bill saying that the newspaper had to put in the bottom of theirs that this has been made available on a website, a free website. They can provide it free, but they also have to send it to the, a state repository where people can go look at it free. So they, they take out, maybe they're just assuming with their language there and their resolution that it's assumed, if everything goes to the state repository, that you don't have to do it in your, in your newspaper. But I'm proposing that, or we're proposing that we change it to read A S B, that the resolution reads, A S B S D supports a website hosted and operated by the state of South Dakota, on which local governments could post any required notices or meeting information in lieu of any other posting requirements in current state law. I mean, just kind of restoring it close to what it was. And our deal on it is, the rationale implies that it, might imply it, but they should match. And then just some stats, we included informational stats, it's just related to us. I don't know what they are for other school districts in the state. Between 2011 and 2021, our legal newspaper dropped its circulation from 40,800 to about 14,300. And over that time, our costs increased from, that same time, our costs had increased from 46.4 to 54.9. And of course, putting it out, we put our minutes and all that stuff on our own website anyway. That obviously is free. I don't know what the state would charge us to operate that. I'm sure it'd be a fairly small amount. But then the traffic on our district website averages about 41,000 unique viewers in a month. So there's certainly a lot of ability for people to read all this information on our website, and we do get people wanting to. So that is another one, I guess, we'll take up, item four, if we want to make a formal proposal. The next one, yeah, has to do about, well, I'll just read it. A S B S D opposes legislation permitting the referral of local school board policy. We don't, I haven't heard anything about this. I didn't, nobody, I don't know anybody that's heard anything about this. But are they really talking about policy? Because a lot of times we use the word policy, and it isn't right. It's not the right word, because we have policies and regulations, and then we have some procedures we do, right? So is that what they're talking, are they talking about any decision the board makes?
That's a good question. I don't, I do know it includes policy, I would, but I would think it's more the broader.
Because right now, there's the ones I could think of, you can, the public can refer capital, their lease certificates if they're over a certain amount, the school start date, you know that, opt-out, they can refer that, and they can, if you're going to close a school, they can refer that. So there are items that can be referred. I just can't figure, are they trying to get rid of all? Are they trying to get rid of any new ones, or what?
I think it's reaction to the COVID masking.
Oh, okay.
Well, we just said on this one, just, we, we just aren't sure. So more information and if we can.
So it's probably not an action we need to take, but Mark would be kind of like, get the lowdown on what exactly they're talking about out there. And if it is just about school policy, I don't know that. I mean, I think we would agree with it, but the school policies shouldn't be referable. But, and it's the board policy, sometimes people mean it, and they mean it, and sometimes they say it, and they don't mean it. So that was our issue on that one.
We need clarification.
Local governments, it's a new one, the school safety program. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk about that one just a little bit. I don't think it's anything that we would argue the rationale stated. Let's see, I got to read this one again.
Well, there's another one about funding.
Oh, that's maybe the one I'm thinking of, sorry.
This one's just more general.
Forget it.
So that's coming in the next section. So that's the end of B. So we're now in C, school finance. There's sparsity funding, doesn't really affect us, but that's fine. There's two-year fall enrollment averaging. They've had that in there for several years. Got taken away when they increased the small school factor from 20 to 25 percent. So personally, I'm kind of think, you can't have your cake and eat it too on that, but.
And I think it was revised in 2019, too, in response to the pandemic specifically with the fluctuations in enrollment.
Yeah, and they did do a one-year fix that helped everybody almost, including us. Three was, is capital outlay adjustments, there's no change there. Four is general obligation bonds, no change there. Property tax exemption for home school instruction, hoping that, no change there. Okay, here's one I want to look at a little closer. What they're really doing here is getting, it's called increasing state aid, and it's changing what was maintaining inflation factor. So they want to, they want to get away from talking about specific increases, like we asked for 3% inflation, whichever is less, and just say, they should fund education at what they can. But that's what they're going, and I, personally, I'm not really opposed to that. It's, it's kind of like whatever's in the state aid formula sometimes is used as a, sometimes, is argued anyway, as a, as a ceiling rather than a floor. And the floor, so the ceiling moves, because we got more last year than we should, and the floor, one year we got cut 8.6%, when inflation was close to zero. So it really, so this is just saying, just fund it at, at what money is, is there and fund it to what it needs to be. Don't specify an amount anymore. So it's kind of turns it into more flow rate language than specific language.
What would then prevent the state from saying, well, well, just give you 1%?
Because they're supposed to focus on the maximum amount of state dollars available. That's.
My question would be the accountability.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we want to, if we want to say leave it the way it is. I just want to, we just wanted to point out that they're getting away from specifics, and they're going to more goal-oriented, big, big picture thinking. Can think about it, we can bring that one up.
It's a local song.
Number four.
I feel like it's, it allows them to argue, well, we just don't have the money. So even if 3%, you know, is lesser or whatever, they're not going to ever fund it, because the other, as I talked about earlier, with the other pots not being full and ours not being full will happen, and we'll just say there's not enough for education. I feel like there needs to be some number out there, so there's at least, yeah, to it, so that you can actually say, no, this was not funded at this percent. And it gives us, if we don't get that percent, we can at least explain to our taxpayers if we have to go and do an opt-out or something, because the state aid not being fully funded is what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, if I remember right, I think a few years ago, we were the ones that actually got in the language in here, 3% inflation, whichever is less. Whichever is more, I mean, replacing.
More. I would say what?
You think about the last couple of years where we've had such a surplus as well, and so how do you come back and say there was no money in the budget when you're shoving all this money for the rainy day?
To reserves, yeah.
You know? And so how do you rationalize that in being able to say there wasn't any money when you put a whole bunch of it away for some other day? And, but we didn't have a, I mean, we have the numbers now, and it's not helping us, but I don't know that not having any numbers would make it any better.
I think we should maybe recommend our language.
And so all I'd have to do is leave it alone, because down in the bottom there, it's the asset, it says, to accomplish that, the inflationary index should be changed to 3% inflation, whichever is greater. That's the old language.
Yeah, it was adopted last year.
So was it just last year? Yeah.
It's adopted 2008, it had to have been revised in 2021 as well.
This seems like it's a budgeting philosophical sort of bill that really doesn't have anything that holds it to a, like, here's what we need, versus like the formula, it gives them direction. This is more of a budgeting philosophical, you know, what's with the maximum dollars, or what's maximum need? Just opens up a, a.
So we'll vote on that in item four, and I think, I'm hearing that this is just to leave it as it is, or delete the proposal, not, just to leave it as it is. I guess we'll have to raise that, right? Seven is accountability waivers, no change there. Protecting, eight is protecting school district valuations, no change there. And there's nine, funding for participation of home school students in public school, interscholastic activities, they didn't change that. Ten is, you know, it's just a real minor change. It's, they're taking, A S B supports the implementation of new target teacher salary accountability targets only if new ongoing funding beyond the annual increase. So they're just taking out of new target, and just saying, they just wanted to read this, support the implementation of teacher salary accountability targets only if new ongoing funding beyond the annual increase in state aid. Now, if they get their other one passed next year, they'll have to change this, because there won't be targets, increase for state aid. They didn't deal with that this year. So I don't really, didn't really have a comment on this one, other than just to tell you what it was about.
Yeah. I'll talk about the next two. The big picture that we talked about with 11 and 12 is it just is categorical funding, and it gets really narrow. So it's not the concept that we don't support, but, you know, for 11 with the funding for S R Os, to me, is pretty narrow, and maybe it's a component of the aid formula for school safety, or it goes back to that other position, just about school safety, and it falls within that. And you have so many variables around districts that could or couldn't do that, whereas funding may be used, you might have a district that doesn't yet have security cameras or other school safety mechanisms, or they don't have a local police force but could still do something with school safety. So I think that's just very narrow was, was some of our thinking. And then same with 12. And I think, I could be wrong, but I think 12 is a result of some of the things that emerged from the summer study, looking at alternative paths to graduation, which could include some programmatic components along the lines of C T E or industry certification. So I think well-intended, but not sure that that's a standalone item that we would maybe want to go in that direction. So I think those would be a couple, again, for some more information. And just going at it from the bigger picture of that narrow categorical funding isn't something that we typically. the bigger picture of that narrow categorical funding isn't something that we typically supported. Todd, do you want to say anything more about that from the historical perspective?
Uh, yeah, I, well, I would, I could just add that usually we, as a general rule, but maybe not always, we'll, we'll try to avoid being proponents of, of categorical aid, because we think some schools might need funding for that, some might need it for something else, but, uh, it just takes away from the general. But, not always, sometimes it's-
And it references grant funding in there. We already have Perkins funding that goes toward CTE kinds of things. I'm not sure what the thinking is related to kind of coupling those things up together. So, anyway. Okay?
Okay. On the rest of these, I don't think we have really any strong comments. Maybe just point out, this taxation stuff is kind of important, but one is about the commitment to the half penny sales tax, especially now, it's going to be a big deal if, A, if there's a new expense, significant expense, and B, if there's a lot, loss of revenue, which could happen here in the next, uh, four months or so. So, um, not lose that half penny. Um, and that's one. Uh, Item Two there is the Partridge Amendment about if taxes exceed a certain amount, then they're going to cut taxes. They're trying to say you should only, it must be balanced. They're just revising their language. It's still the same, same, uh, same idea. And three, on tax reduction or repeal, um, that's a new one. "ASBSD opposes the reduction or repeal of a tax without a new source of revenue, being implemented and replaced those dollars lost." That's, just kind of sums up, um, the two above it. So they're, they seem to be all okay, as far as we're concerned. E is personnel, human resource management, Item One, no change. And, uh, state mandates and federal mandates are, on the next page, no changes there. And finally, federalations, and it's some changes there. So, yeah, that's it. Unless you wanted to talk about any else.
No, I think we're okay. In the interest of time, move on.
So just a reminder, this is so that you can make decisions as a body for recommendations for our delegate to take to ASB, who then will eventually vote on their own positions. So these aren't our positions. We're just weighing in in the way that we think we've been directed to weigh in on as they vote on those.
Yep.
For extreme clarity.
Thank you.
So I just want to get like a basic motion in order. So, so B12, we need to look at, uh, B12 was the bond elections, and then there was the second day of April or June. So based on the discussion, do you want to replace with ours? Do you want it to be the motion that, or do you want it to be just leave it, leave it as it's currently written?
Do we need to open for public comment?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We, uh, well, no, they got to sign it. They, nobody signed it.
Okay.
Well, uh, I would open it for a motion to propose our language to replace B12.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Passes.
Okay, B13. COVID, you know, one of our suggestions was just delete the, delete it, get it, get it out of there, or leave it alone, or just give the word, rid the words COVID.
I think it's either ignore it or eliminate it.
Anybody have any strong feelings either way?
I'm in favor of deleting it, but I think there's more important ones that comes down to other negotiations.
So you want to just do nothing on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Skip that one.
B15 was next, um, the website. I think, uh, I think our change to their amendment would make it a little better.
I would have to agree. Can I get a motion to, um, propose our language?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Okay, then we're on to C6. Uh, that's the inflation factor we just talked about. I guess it would probably be to leave it alone.
I'd revert to the 2021 thing, because see, they just have adapted 2018, so I would hate for them to not include the language that was changed in 2021, which it is included in there, but just to make sure, let's say just revert to the 2021 language.
In that last sentence.
Probably the whole thing.
Of the first, of the resolution, yeah.
The whole, the whole first paragraph reverting.
Because that will do what we need, right?
Yeah, I mean, that would make it like what we're, we've got in our tentative platform.
I'll make a motion to maintain the language as was written in 2021.
So, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Passes.
Okay. And then did you want to do anything with C11 or 12? End or 12?
Which would potentially just be opposing based on categorical funding, or you can leave it alone.
Strongly one way or the other, but- I can see, um, where you're coming from, where, um, especially like school safety. There's a lot of small communities in South Dakota that don't have a regular, I mean, they maybe don't even have enough of a police force to support their community, let alone somebody that they could dedicate to their school. So is that fair that they wouldn't receive the funding that could potentially make their district safer, just because they don't have that person?
Narrow piece.
Yeah. And so I guess I feel like I would, I would probably oppose them categorically and just say we would prefer that they were, um, if you said, not so narrow, and maybe more of a broad definition of school safety.
Factor that might be added to the formula, or some other mechanism.
Yeah, that would be my thought.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
So moved. Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Yep.
11 and 12.
All right, that's, that was why I wrote down that we-
So we'll do a summary of that to then, um, send with our delegates, so that it's in a good, clear format. Not that we can't remember all that.
Mark is going to do a great job representing our best interests.
Just stay up here.
We have full faith.
Full faith.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Does the board have any preference on when we bring our platform back to the board for approval? Do you want me to just do that at our next regular meeting, or leave it where it's slated in December, or do you have any? One of the things we looked at was that December meeting, if there was a question, if that was one you. I think we've got a few things that still need to go on there, but we were just looking at-
The first meeting?
Agendas ahead of time.
First meeting in December?
Mm-hmm.
I think it'd be better, because isn't the first meeting after our legislative breakfast? So maybe we should do it.
Yeah, we could leave it there.
So in November would be my preference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so move it to the 14th.
Yep.
Okay.
We are in November.
Yeah, like our next regular meeting.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved.
So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that passes. We are adjourned.